Okay, good evening, everyone. Time is 6:31, April the 16th. This regular meeting of the mayor and council is now called to order. A roll call, all council members are present. Please rise for a pledge of allegiance followed by an invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tyson, will you lead us in prayer?
Heavenly Father, we come this day thanking you, thanking you for the wonderful day that we have seen. Father God, we ask you to come into the midst of our meeting, help us guide and make a decision in the way that you feel we should. In your son, Jesus' name, we pray, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Tyson.
Okay, I do have a few announcements. All of these meetings are held here in the community room. Of course, we have our council meeting tonight. Municipal Court is April the 17th at 1:00 p.m. Planning Commission, April the 23rd at 6:00 p.m. Our next council work session, May the 2nd, 6:30 p.m. Main Street Commission Meeting, May 14, 8:00 a.m. Historic Preservation Meeting, May 14, 6:00 p.m. Municipal Court, May 15th at 1:00 p.m. And our next council meeting, May 21st at 6:30 p.m. Okay, we do have a number of presentations this afternoon. We're going to start off with a Child Abuse Prevention Month proclamation. And we have Lauren Gregory here with us representing that group. So Lauren, I will read this proclamation to you. The proclamation reads, whereas children are our most valuable resource and they are also our most vulnerable, all of Georgia's children have a right to be safe and an opportunity to thrive, learn, and grow in an environment that fosters healthy development. And whereas child abuse and neglect can be prevented by supporting and strengthening Georgia's families, thus preventing the far-reaching effects of maltreatment and providing the opportunity for children to develop healthy, trusting family bonds, and consequently building the foundations of communities. And whereas positive child experiences labeled PCES, like loving caregivers on safe, stable, and nurturing relationships, can help mitigate trauma and the negative impact of adverse childhood experiences to promote the social, emotional, and developmental well-being of children. And whereas effective child abuse prevention strategies succeed because of partnerships created within the communities among citizens, human service agencies, schools, faith communities, healthcare providers, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business sector inspiring action from expected and unexpected partners in prevention. And whereas by providing a safe, stable, and nurturing environment for our children, free of violence, abuse, and neglect, we can ensure that Georgia's children will grow to their full potential as the next generation of leaders helping to secure the future of this state and nation. Now therefore, I, David Keener, Mayor of the City of Social Circle and State of Georgia, do hereby proclaim April 2024 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in the City of Social Circle, Georgia. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause to be affixed the great seal of Social Circle, Georgia, this 16th day of April 2024. Lauren, thank you. Do you have any comments?
Yeah, just real quick, I just want to thank y'all so much for having me. You know, I come every year, so I'm not going to say the same thing I say over year. But if you haven't been to our center, I'm with the Child Voice Child Advocacy Center. We're right down the road here in Social Circle. We serve kids from Newton and Walton County when there are concerns that they've experienced abuse to ensure they have what they need to feel heard, supported, and protected. And we're able to do that through a supportive community like all of you. So we see close to 300 kids a year, just to make sure that they have what they need to feel. But this month, we celebrate prevention. And like the proclamation said, we know that child abuse can be prevented and we can all do small things to check on the kids in our lives. So that's my challenge for everybody here this month. I know we're halfway through April already, but you probably have some kids in your life. Make sure that they know that if anything ever happens, they can talk to you and you'll take them seriously. We're a resource for all of you. So if y'all ever have a concern or a question, please call us. If you haven't been to our center, we'd love to have you for a tour. Come on by whenever. We have two buildings down in between. There's Everdome and, you know, Brooksburg, like, you know. Two red brick buildings, so we're in there. We'd love to have you come. But I really thank you for the ways that you support the community so that Walton County Social Circle is a great place for people to live. So thank you all so much.
Thank you. All right, next on the agenda is the Newton Education Foundation Proclamation. They are not going to be able to be with us this afternoon. So we'll move on to the next one, which is the Mayor's Reading Club Proclamation. And it's a proclamation that reads, whereas literacy, can't even say it, is not just an education issue, it's an economic workforce and quality of life issue. And whereas research shows that children who can't read proficiently by the end of third grade are more likely to experience poor health, have discipline problems, and drop out of high school. And whereas each year in the United States, low literacy levels are linked to hundreds of billions of dollars in nonproductive healthcare and judicial costs. And whereas 68% of Georgia 4th graders do not read proficiently. And whereas collaborative efforts and strategic partnerships must be undertaken to address literacy issues. And whereas the Mayor's Reading Club program is offered through Georgia City Solutions, a Georgia Municipal Association-managed nonprofit. And whereas the goal of the program is to improve literacy skills and overall success with early reading among children and youth in Georgia cities throughout encouragement, support, and leadership from city mayors. And whereas Georgia City Solutions has commissioned a children's book series to use as part of the program to teach young readers about local government. And a copy of the first two books in this series titled, "Georgia Carolina Visit City Hall" and "Georgia Carolina Visits Our Hometown Heroes", is provided in the program's starter kit. And whereas the Mayor's Reading Club is flexible and can be delivered in person or virtually and promotes partnerships and collaboration between the city, county, schools, public libraries, local nonprofits, and business community. Now therefore, I, David L. Keener, Mayor of the City of Social Circle, do hereby join the Mayor's Reading Club program and proclaim April 16th, 2024, as Mayor's Reading Club Day in Social Circle, Georgia, and encourage all residents, businesses, and community partners to help promote and elevate literacy as a community priority and support the Mayor's Reading Club to improve Georgia's economic vitality, one book at a time. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and seal this 16th day of April, 2024. All right, that brings us up to employee introduction and recognition.
Good evening. We have a new admin support specialist joining us. Her name is Ludi Williams. She's from New Bern, Georgia. She is an Eastside High School graduate, and she is also another UGA grad with a BBA in Marketing and an emphasis in Data Analysis. And we're super excited to have her onboard.
Thank you. Would you like to say anything?
Thank y'all for having me.
Great, thank you, Ludi. All right, citizens request, so I don't... Oh, forget about that every time, don't I? Sorry, Amber.
This Saturday in downtown, we will have the Social Circle Day Festival. This is our spring, it was one of our friendship festivals. It will be from 10 to 4:00. We have 76 vendors signed up. We have pre festivities and we'll be entertaining throughout the day. Next week, part 2 of the TV show, it will be April 25th to 27th. The theme this year is Fourteen to the Height, and we have lots of different activities planned for Mayor's video TV following this. And then last thing to look is the Star Wars Day, which will be on Saturday, May the 4th, from 10 to 2:00 p.m. This is, the Downtown Market will be hosting this. The participants will start in Friendship Park with a craft and go on to do a scavenger hunt throughout town. The other participating businesses will be giving out Star Wars-themed treats and prizes. And then that afternoon, we will celebrate Cinco de Mayo Beer crawl from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. And there will be a band, the Key Rovers, in Friendship Park from 6:00 to 8:00.
Questions for Amber? Thank you. All right, citizens request, no one signed up. Council requests, do we have any?
Yeah, I have a question. I talked to Chief Guest yesterday. Ash Street, is it a one-way all the way through? Or is it not? I guess that's the first question. It's supposed, it's showing as a one-way all the way through, but it's not used as a one-way all the way through?
At least that's what Ken and I had an office talk about that road council. We went back up there, we took a look at it different times and we came to think, even though it's supposed to be a one-way all the way through, it's being utilized half-way one-way and half-way the other. So we need to do one or two things about that. We need to correct the signage of the cement area and we're probably on that. Or we could turn around and change that to those speed complaints we're getting coming through there and redo it in the area coming back out of the building to maybe give it three-way sign. But it's a multiple process.
Yeah, because, I mean, I'm looking on the map, like I told you, I looked on the map and it shows it's a one-way. But then I know that people don't use it as a one-way. You know, they turn up from the store, but they only, they do go down from Highway 11, but, you know. And the issue is their speeding coming from Highway 11. When they're coming down there, they don't realize they're in an apartment, especially if they're not coming to the apartment.
Yeah, I think...
That's right.
Yeah, and I think that there's a one-way sign from South Cherokee.
Yep.
But what you're saying, and I have seen people turning left, going the correct direction there, but I think what's happening is there's people turning left from Cannon at the store going up the road.
They don't go out and walk around.
Yep.
Yeah, right beside the store. So they're, you know, if they leave out the store, they go...
Right, yeah. Yeah, that makes sense. Especially if you're going to the apartments.
So, I mean, like I said, the ones that are coming down the hill, they're coming down pretty, pretty fast. And then, like you're thinking the one-way, when you get to the apartment after you pass the wooded area and now you're right there at the apartment.
Any others? Okay, next up, agenda approval. I don't know of any modifications, so I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second. Motion from Nathan, a second from Tyson. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, brings us up to public hearings. First up is consideration of amendments to the Unified Development Code regarding how distances are measured.
This was, this amendment was initiated by request from the council to strive for consistency across the Code of Ordinances. The proposed text amendment would help standardize the way we measure for all processes. So this would match our proposed alcohol ordinance. And the only place it really affects is fuel stations, but we put it at the beginning of the document. So if ever we added any text amendments that would require some sort of measurement, this is the way that it would be measured, which would be consistent with our, with the alcohol ordinance within our Code of Ordinances. Staff recommends approval of this text amendment, and the Planning Commission also unanimously recommended approval.
I have a question. You just said that it conforms to the alcohol ordinance? Is that, so it's the proposed?
The proposed alcohol ordinance language, correct.
So this would not go into effect for alcohol until we pass the alcohol ordinance?
This is strictly for the UDC. So this measurement and text amendment will go into effect as soon as, you know, the, I guess the minutes are approved. But the proposed alcohol ordinance mirrors the language that we're talking about here for the, for the UDC. So we just copied what we have discussed in reference to that proposed alcohol ordinance, not necessarily what the current alcohol ordinance says, because the current alcohol ordinance measurement is different.
So anything that's added to the UDC from this point on will go by this measure?
Yes. Yeah, absolutely. So just for the record, the actual amendment is adding a section to 1.2. So it would add in section 1.2.10, which has to do with measurement. Any measurement shall be measured by the most direct route of travel on the ground along a public right-of-way from the nearest point of the existing building's property line to the front door of the proposed building.
And the reason that that was chosen is that is how the state regulations operate for alcohol, is they measure it from the existing property line to the building of the proposed alcohol site, so.
Any other questions for Ashley? All right, hearing none, I'll open the hearing. No one signed up to speak for or against, but I'll give the opportunity if anyone here is like to speak. Anyone to speak in favor? Anyone to speak in opposition? Hearing none, I'll bring it back to the council. Close the public hearing, bring it back to the council.
I'll make a motion to accept the recommendation of the planning and zoning and the staff.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Steve and a second from Teresa. Further discussion? All in favor, indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like, sign. Motion passes. All right, next up, we have a rezone 2024-003 for 188 Thurman Backus Road, also known as Tax Parcel SC230-001. It's a rezone from AG to L1 for the purpose of mini storage and covered outdoor storage facilities.
Yeah, so this is a rezone from, the request for a rezone from agricultural to light industrial LI for mini storage. The proposed development would consist, according to the site plan, of 15 mini storage buildings, which would consist of 160 climate-controlled units and 82 non-climate-controlled units, along with a covered outdoor area kind of toward the, towards the north of the property for RV and boat storage. This is an allowable use in light industrial, along with the accessory use of outdoor storage of RVs and boats. This is also in the industrial character area, so this does align with our comprehensive plan and our future land use map. We received a few comments from our internal departments. There's no sanitary sewer available directly to this parcel, but there is sewer available at 178 Thurman Backus. There's a 12-inch water main that runs down the left side of the road going towards Parkway. There's currently a single-family detached home on the property, so that will have to be removed, obviously, prior to construction. There was a community meeting held on this property because it is over five acres. However, no one was in attendance besides staff and the applicant. The Planning Commission heard this request at their March 26th meeting, and they recommended unanimously approval. And staff is also recommending approval of this.
Any questions for Ashley on this one? Okay, I'll open the public hearing and ask the applicant if they'd like to speak. Dana Soro?
I think Ashley pretty much touched on everything, so I'll just say my conference question that you may have. Excuse me, Dana, I need you to get right to the mic, even if you need to pull it down. And pull it down to you. Hey, okay, my name is Dana Soro, and as Ashley stated, we're here proposing or requesting the property located at 188 Thurman Backus to be zoned for light industrial, which does fit the future land use. And we just appreciate your support in this project, so.
Okay. Any questions for Dana? Okay, hearing none, public hearing is open. We do have one person that signed up to speak for, and that is Dana Soro. I'm assuming since you, since you've made your application that you don't desire to speak. No one signed up to speak against, but once again, you may not have seen the signing sheet, so I'll give you the opportunity. If there's anyone here to speak against this application. Seeing none, close the public hearing and bring it back to the council.
I've got a question. So Kit, if the vehicles got flat tires and stuff like that that we will write code enforcement for, how do we enforce that on that property? Because I see some storage lots that you pass that, you know, they have boats there or RVs there, and sometimes they're not in the best of looking shape.
Kit, please.
Sorry, you have to come up here.
I believe the way we can handle that, Councilman, would be just to follow what the code says, which says it can't be in any state of disrepair or lack of maintenance. It's fair to clear, has to carry a current tag, has to be in operable, serviceable condition. Can't be missing parts or hoods or nothing like that.
So they have to fly by all the same code? Like I said, I just see some that you pass, they have old stuff just stuck back there. You know, people probably paying storage on it, but they don't look that good.
Anything else? We've already voted on the item?
Nope.
Nope.
Everyone in favor?
I'll make a motion, how about that? I'll make a motion to accept the planning and zoning's recommendation and the staff's recommendation to approve the rezon.
Second. Motion from Nathan, second from Steve. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right, glad we got through that one. I'm just not thinking in the eye apparently. Consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, we have seven items on the consent agenda this evening, five of which are approval of various minutes. We have approval of the minutes from the mayor and council regular meeting on March 19th, the executive session minutes of March 19th, the call meeting from April 4th, and the executive sessions of April 4th, and then also the mayor and council work session on April 4th. The other two items, we have an amendment to the engineering contract for East High Tower tap project. This is an amendment to the contract with Kickenwood. Since GDOT now requires additional services related to wetland permitting and stream buffer variance, this is a cost now to exceed of $49,500, built on an hourly basis, and reimbursed through the tap grant with the city's 20% match of $9,900. Project's funded through SPOST. The second item is the approval of the GMA 2024 District 5 ballot, and nominees are for presidents, Eric Joyce, he's a council member in Madison, for president, first vice president is Kurt Ward, the mayor of Bousleton. Second vice president is Amanda Willis, the council member from Carlton. And the third vice president is John Howard, the mayor of Monroe. Recommend approval of the consent agenda.
I would like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, I have a motion from Teresa and a second from Steve. Is there further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like, sign. Consent agenda passes unanimously. We have no unfinished business. New business item number one, consideration of request to waive capital cost recovery fees to incentivize developments to contribute to municipal system improvements and for historic renovation.
So there are two projects that have requested relief from the capital cost recovery fees associated with their, with their current projects. The first one being the Social Circle Logistics Center development and the JK Designs office remodel surrounding Friendship Park. With any new construction in the city, staff charges capital cost recovery fees to tap into the municipal water and sewer system, and it's all based off of the size of the tap. We also charge for our cost of the meter. So we basically ask what a quote for the meter would look like, and then we give them the same thing that we receive. So for the first project, the P&amp;K project, which is the Social Circle Logistics Center, or the SCLC, the CCR fees and the water meter fee would be, would total at 1.3, a little over $1.3 million. So to break it down, the 10-inch water line tap would be $750,000. The 8-inch sewer line tap would be $560,000. And the 3-inch water meter would be $56,886. So the grand total would be $1,366,886. And the city is currently working with this development, along with other developments along East High Tower to construct a regional pump station. And that project has a total cost of $2.7 million. So the city has committed $1 million of our funds to that, to that project. And we're hoping, P&amp;K has also committed funds to that project, and we're hoping that a third development along East High Tower will help contribute to that project as well. So we're currently in talks with them about how much each, each development is willing to contribute. And so they were under the assumption that those contributions would mitigate the capital cost recovery fees. So staff, staff does not have the ability to waive these capital cost recovery fees, but they're only contributing to the sewer infrastructure of the city, not necessarily the water infrastructure. So we could potentially waive their sewer capital cost recovery fee, or we could waive the sewer and the water since they are, they are planning to contribute whatever the difference is.
They contributed to 1.7 or 1.3?
We don't know what they're contributing yet, right?
Uh, we don't know what they're contributing yet because the memorandum of agreement has not been signed between all three parties. But we are in discussion with them, and I believe that they, in the past, I think Robbie was having more discussions with them about how much they were willing to contribute, but I think they were willing to contribute the additional $1.7 million, and then whatever ended up coming down the line at the other development off of East High Tower could pay P&amp;K back, basically.
Yeah, it would be based on the sewer portion of that. This has not covered the water portion.
So if the contributions do not come up to $560,000, which is the cost of the sewer line tap, we could, we could essentially credit them and say you just have to pay the difference of whatever the $560,000 is. Or, and P&amp;K would still be responsible for the fees associated with the water. So the meter and the tap fee, which would still total to $806,886. But this action would set a precedent that would allow staff to offer a reduction or waiver of CCR fees for a developer if they choose to improve the municipal water or sewer system that they would be tying into. So I can move on to the next development, or do you guys still have questions on the Social Circle Logistics Center?
My question, my question about the whole thing is, is that if they're going to contribute a million dollars to the sewer, or if they're going to create, contribute $750,000 to the sewer, we need to give them that portion of whatever they contribute of impact fee back to them. Doesn't matter whether it's water or sewer. If they're going to pay...
So whatever they're spending, we should give that back.
Give them credit for it.
I mean, I would agree with that.
Is that up into a certain amount, or just for whatever?
If a project is $3 million, and their impact fee's $3 million, and they wouldn't pay the $3 million, we'll give them $3 million credit.
That's from there on, is what you're saying.
Huh?
Any project that anybody would...
If it's hindriven, if it's... If it's hindriven, if it's improving, improving the city system.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
I would add, it's, it's an actual improvement, not just adding a lift station or something like that.
It's got to be an actual improvement, don't add, not adding lift stations.
Not something, we gotta, like a lift station.
It's gonna keep going now, no.
Yep.
I agree.
I'll make that a motion.
Can you restate?
You want me to restate?
Yeah.
That we give them credit for what they spend to improve the sewer system, as long as it does not incur, incur the city ongoing expenses, as in lift stations and stuff like that.
Are you saying sewer or whatever system? Cause you just said sewer then.
Sewer, water.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, cause Susan was right, and then you said just sewer.
Can we clarify if it's across the site or just for building one hundred?
Cause they have another tap that they'll have on the East High Tower.
They have two more taps potentially.
It's per improvement. So if there's not another improvement, they pay.
So if they pay the one point seven million dollars.
If they pay one point seven now.
It's a credit for one seven.
There's a credit for one seven, so if they.
Huh? Off of one building?
Off of one building.
So if they pay one point seven now, they would still have a credit of four, roughly four hundred thousand dollars to go towards the next building.
Yes, cause they paid for the improvement, as long as it's NPK.
Yeah, mhm.
Or whoever.
So site wide?
Yeah, site, site wise.
Okay.
So it sounds like it's just an offsetting donation, is that correct? So, so.
Actually, what we're doing, the impact fee would be paying for this.
Correct.
So instead of us, we just, basically, it's a, it's a wash.
Yeah, they're.
We're getting the money, one way or another.
You, you wanna offset it as mu, so whatever they're donating to the water sewer system or improvement.
They're just.
You're giving them an offset towards whatever improve, or impact fees that they would pay.
Exactly.
Okay.
Um, at some point, with what they're doing, though, the impact fees, we're gonna, we're gonna still collect.
Yeah.
Steve, I'm looking at the, uh, agenda report that we have on this, and it's, it's the logistics center as well as JK Designs.
They're splitting it.
We separate.
Are you separating this? Okay, uh, motion from Steve, is there a second?
Second.
Motion from Steve, second from Tyson, is there further discussion on this item? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes, and we're gonna take up, um, JK Designs now.
Okay, so, um, earlier this evening, I received, um, some additional information, um, and you guys should have an updated agenda report, uh, within your packet. Uh, JK Designs is currently rehabbing the brick buildings surrounding Friendship Park, uh, to become their office spaces and a courtyard, so they're improving kind of their campus. Uh, the CCR fees for this project, since the project does require a new meter and new taps, um, it would be, uh, seven thousand five hundred for a one inch water line, uh, eight thousand seven hundred and fifty for a one inch sewer line tap, uh, but staff is unsure about the size of the tap, we went with one inch because commercial does require one inch water tap, so it usually follows. They also would have a water fee, a water meter fee of five hundred and eighty-six dollars and eighty-five cents, and that's for the one inch water meter. So that brings their grand total to sixteen thousand dollars eight hundred and thirty-six, sixteen thousand eight hundred and thirty-six dollars and eighty-six cents, there we go. These buildings have been a part of the city for over a century, uh, there would be no additional burden to the system, uh, the project is helping restore buildings within, you know, our main drag in the downtown area. Uh, staff would really need the water meter cost covered, um, and this action would set precedent, so we could offer an incentive for revitalizing and rehabbing some of the historical structures across towns that, that don't have water taps, or they may be so old that they, they really won't do, um, their job. So we would be able to waive or reduce CCR fees based off of the precedent set here tonight. Um, but I did include, uh, at the work session, we had some questions about what, what it would cost the city for something, for a project like this. So for a one inch water line tap, it would be two thousand dollars, eight, two thousand eight hundred dollars, and for the one inch sewer line tap, it would be four thousand two hundred and seventy dollars, and then the water meter fee would be five hundred and eighty-six dollars and eighty-five cents, and then any cost of asphalt, concrete cuts and, and repair, it's about approximately one thousand eight hundred dollars, so they're looking at a total of nine thousand one hundred and seventy dollars for the city to do that work.
What was for the sewer tap fee?
The sewer tap, uh, I got a question about that. A sewer tap's gonna be three inch, the smallest sewer tap you can get's gonna be a three inch sewer tap.
Okay, that was unclear, the information was getting very cool. So that would be a three inch sewer tap.
Yeah.
Actually, actually, are they gonna have asphalt to cut into down there? Where's, where's the meter over there?
Uh, that's what I'm.
It's in the alley. The alley's paved up through there.
And Ashley, what was the sewer tap fee?
They gonna charge us?
The sewer tap fee for, with the CCR?
Uh, yes.
So it would be eight thousand seven hundred and fifty. So it's about, uh, that, that's roughly cutting the cost in half.
So you're talking about nine thousand one hundred and seventy compared to sixteen thousand eight thirty-six?
Correct.
Anybody got any more questions? The, uh, staff recommendation is to waive the capital cost recovery fee for JK Designs.
Correct, uh, we would still need to recoup the cost of the meter, though.
I make a motion to accept, uh, approximate value, I wanna charge the true value of what it actually cost us, of the nine thousand one seventy, if it's greater than that, then it would be that price, and waive the sixteen, whatever it is, but what my motion needs to be is, is that they pay the actual cost of the work for the meters and the sewer taps.
Not the impact, yeah.
Mhm.
Yeah. And, uh, what, like I said, any cost that we incur, we have to pay, patch, streak back, since we're gonna set a precedent, we might as well say, put, add that part into it, the actual, our actual cost is what we charging.
Okay, heard a motion from Steve, is there a second?
Second.
Motion from Steve and a second from Nation, Nathan, further discussion?
Uh, yeah, I just got a question. So we're gonna charge them for whatever they charges us, whatever it takes for us to do the job. So up top at the logistics system center, are we having to do anything there that's gonna cost us to do?
We're contributing one million dollars to a regional pump station.
So we're just contributing, and they're gonna take care of everything else? So I'm saying, we don't have to put a meter, we, we don't have to do a meter or none of that?
Yeah, this is, that, that's.
It's a totally different kind of project.
Totally different kind of project.
No, I'm just saying, I'll make sure it's not a meter or nothing like that, okay?
Okay, got a motion and a second, further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ashley. Uh, item two, consideration of approving the rate and financial planning study for all city utilities.
So, um, at, at our work session back in February, uh, council has tasked staff with moving forward with, um, with determining what it would take to, uh, issue a water, sewer utility bond, uh, sometime probably later on this fall, around October, that would cover water, sewer, and gas utilities. In order to, um, move ahead as part of the bond process, um, and in consult, consultation with our financial advisor, Davenport and Company, um, a full financial assessment of the city utilities is necessary to determine what needs to be done to ensure financial viability and repayment of the bond. Uh, that includes a full financial study of all of our utilities, as well as a full-blown rate study on all of our water and sewer rates, including some of the capital cost recovery funds that we were talking about a while ago. The total cost of the rate and financial planning study is seventy-five thousand dollars, uh, to be done by a company called Reftalis, and this expense will be rolled into the cost of the bond, and we therefore recommend approval.
Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the financial, uh, rate study.
Okay, we've got a motion from Nathan and a second from Steve, is there further discussion? All in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Uh, next item, consideration of adjustment to the water and sewer rates.
Okay, um, so as we discussed in work session, the, um, water sewer fund is not in a healthy, uh, financial condition, and there are many reasons for this, um, but primarily because of the following, um, there's inaccurate revenue forecasting, um, in previous years, um, project costs that have exceeded the automatic two and a half percent increase that's been in place for the last few years, um, emergency repairs that either do not have a funding source or rely on debt financing, we've become, uh, pretty reliant on that, especially for emergency repairs, as well as unanticipated and unfunded projects such as the new water line on the bypass that we're putting in for the, uh, new elementary school. Uh, these factors, uh, has created a debt service coverage ratio that is inadequate to meet the standards of our lenders to approve additional critical projects. Um, and so therefore, it is necessary for us to, uh, consider raising our water and sewer rates. Before we get into what those water and sewer rates should be, I wanna kind of go over where we got to this point, how we're getting to the rates, okay? And this starts back in FY 2020, so for the years 2019, 2020. Uh, the city actually had a water rate, um, where it had a base rate for zero to two thousand gallons of twenty dollars and ninety-one cents, and then for each additional thousand gallons, it was ten dollars and twenty-one, twenty-five cents, and that was for, uh, users who live inside the city limits, there are additional rates if you live outside the city limits. In addition to that, you had a sewer rate from zero to two thousand gallons, that was twenty dollars and thirty-nine cents, and then eight dollars and thirty-nine cents for each additional thousand gallons of sewer. At the budget presentation of June 16th, 2020, um, it was, it was brought to the council's attention that, uh, a rate structure change is recommended from the minimum charge for the first two thousand gallons plus fee per additional thousand gallons, to a fixed rate meter fee plus fee for, per additional one thousand gallons. And going back and, um, looking to see what the city manager at that time said, uh, the verbatim was that the, in the water sewer fund, we have a stable outlook. We're recommending a two and a half percent increase, which is consistent with the rate study from a couple of years ago, which supports our capital projects and also includes a rate structure change. Rather than having a, uh, is indistinguishable word there, charge for the first two thousand gallons, there would be a fixed meter fee, and then bill per one thousand gallons that they use. So in total, the average utility user would see a two and a half percent rate increase. Okay, that's what was said at the June 16th, 2020 meeting. In February, uh, 2021, the city, uh, started working with Davenport on a long-term financial rate study and capital planning study for our utilities, and you can see that in 2021, so this was as of February, so roughly six, seven months after that statement was made, the assumption was that the, uh, meter fee was a dollar sixty, first two thousand gallons was twenty dollars and fifty cents, and each additional thousand was ten dollars and twenty-five cents, so that's twenty-two dollars and ten cents. And you also see, um, that they made a comment on there, that the city adjusted their billing structure for 2021 by adding a monthly, monthly meter fee, which results in an increase in water rates for the average user's bill. You can see the same for sewer rates, uh, where it says first two thousand gallons was nineteen dollars and forty cents, and each additional thousand, uh, nine dollars and seventy cents. And, um, here you can see that, again, in fiscal year 2021, it's in twenty-two dollars and ten cents for the first two thousand gallons, including the meter fee, and then ten dollars and twenty-five cents for each additional thousand, and the same for the projected sewer rates. Now, um, somewhere between June, uh, when those rates were adopted, and July, when the budget got implemented, uh, something got lost in translation, translation somewhere. And, um, it's not as drastic as it seems when you consider that most users use two thousand gallons, okay? So the water rate at that point, the, the base rate of the twenty dollars, approximately twenty dollars went away at that point, and we instituted a meter fee per month of a dollar sixty-four, and ten dollars and fifty-one cents per thousand gallons, and then a sewer rate of nine dollars and ninety-four cents, flat. Well, you can see the immediate impact of what happened, okay? By removing that, uh, base rate for the first zero to two thousand gallons, this is an actual bill that you see what happens for, for a user who uses less than a thousand gallons. So you see that in, that in June 2020, their water bill was for twenty dollars and ninety-one cents, and their sewer bill was for twenty dollars and thirty-nine cents, combined with everything to be eighty-one dollars and sixty, sixty cents, whereas in July 2020, you can see that the sewer bill goes away a hundred percent, and the water bill is now a dollar sixty, okay? Um, and so what tends to happen there is that, um, as, 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 as users who use less than a thousand gallons per month, all they see in their, on their water bill is that dollar sixty, or whatever the current rate is now, it's a dollar seventy-two, that's what they see on their current bill. And then that will, that bill will then continue to accumulate from month to month, until they get to the point where they are, you know, seeing the bill for over a thousand gallons, and so it ends up being, showing up on the bill as essentially a balloon payment, uh, for lack of a better phrase, where the, uh, and I think we've all had these phone calls from, from people who, you know, they say, wow, my, my water rates, my water bill's gone way up this month, and I don't know why, and, um, we start checking for leaks, and there's nothing there. And so we think that that's what's happening, is it's just accumulating month after month, and you're just seeing a dollar sixty, and then all of a sudden, they're gonna see a bill of, uh, twelve dollars plus a sewer fee, okay? So, and then you can see that this current rate structure has, had, uh, the rate structure has continued into our current year, where the current, uh, meter fee per month is a dollar seventy-two, and then eleven dollars and four cents per thousand gallons for water inside the city limits, and then ten dollars and forty-four cents, um, for sewer, uh, every thousand gallons, uh, in the city limits. So what we've done here is, is Kenny Green and I, Kenny with Turnip Seed and I have, have, uh, really, really scrutinized these numbers, and really have kind of come to the conclusion that, um, in order for us to get any further JFA financing, um, we have to raise the water rates, and this is actually per JFA. And we have gone, uh, round and round with them over the last two weeks, try to figure out exactly what it is we need from them, uh, we have sent this, uh, to them, and what we really need to do is we really need to capture that, that first initial two thousand gallons again, okay? And then use that as our basis for increasing the water rates, okay? So what we did was, we went back to what we thought we were passing back in, uh, 2020, 2021, or, or council at that time, I wasn't here then, where, um, you had a meter fee in the first two thousand gallons inside the city was twenty-two dollars and ten cents, each additional thousand gallons inside the city is ten dollars and twenty-five cents, um, outside the city is thirty-three dollars and twelve cents, and fifteen dollars and thirty-six cents. Uh, for sewer inside the city, it was nineteen dollars and forty cents for the first two thousand gallons, uh, nine dollars and seventy cents inside the city for each, uh, additional thousand gallons, and then twenty-nine dollars and ten cents, and fourteen dollars and fifty-five cents, um, for customers who are outside the city. So we used that as our starting point, and because what council agreed to at the time that these rates were passed back in 2020, was that there was gonna be a two and a half percent increase off those rates every year, okay? So you can see there that we've put in the 2022 intended rates, the 2023 intended rates, and 2024 intended rates, um, which is the two and a half percent, okay? So then, um, we used the twenty-three dollars and eighty cents for the meter fee of first two thousand gallons and the other fees here, as our starting point to figure out what it is we needed to do to fix our debt service coverage ratio. And, um, in working with JFA and looking at all of our analysis, um, that requires a fifteen point four percent increase, um, to the water rates, and so that would be a twenty-seven dollars and forty-six cents for the first two thousand gallons, twelve dollars and seventy-four cents for the, each additional thousand, uh, forty-one dollars and sixteen cents for first two thousand gallons outside the city, and one thousand gallons, uh, one thousand, uh, or, or for each additional thousand, it's nineteen dollars and nine cents for outside the city, um, for the sewers, twenty-four dollars and eleven cents. For the sewers, $24.11, um, for, for 2,000 gallons, uh, $12.05 for each additional gallons, uh, 1,000 gallons. And then for outside the city is $36.16 for the first 2,000 gallons. And, uh, $18.08 for each, um, additional 1,000 gallons. So what does it mean? It means that for your average user who uses 1,000 gallons, their current water rate is $12.76 and $10.44 for a total monthly bill, assuming they use 1,000 gallons, of $23.20. By establishing this base rate, uh, what we think it should have been, um, it would increase their differences at $20.37. Okay, however, the majority of users in the city use in excess of 2,000 gallons. So what that does is their difference is actually not as, 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 uh, bad as, as you would expect with a 15.4% increase. So, uh, again, you see that they're paying the same rates as the people using 1,000 gallons, but their difference is $6.87 assuming 2,000 gallons. Okay, um, so in order for us to get our loan request approved by Jifa, they have asked us to have, um, a resolution to them tomorrow morning that states what our rates are going to be. And, um, and so the resolution actually says this, what I did was I, I used the $23.80, uh, or, or the, or the sewer rates, the base rates for this year, what should have been for 2024, the intended rates for 2024. And then increased by 15.4% above that. Okay, and it says in that resolution, um, cause then it would increase all water and sewer rate fees 15.4% off of the 2024 intended rates. They have also asked us to include language in the resolution that, uh, that we will increase rates as required to satisfy debt service obligations to lenders. Um, I don't think that's unreasonable at all. I mean, I think that if we were buying a house or a car, that's all, that's something we would all do, um, in order to satisfy our lender. Also, um, in order to get the sewer fund right, um, our analysis shows that, uh, a utility, a transfer to the water and sewer fund over the next four years, doesn't have to be done all at one time. A total of $2,154,374. Um, and that was the number that I shared with you guys, um, at the work session. Uh, furthermore, um, the city will forgive all debts that are shown in the 2020, 22, 23 audit that are owed by the water sewer fund to other city funds. And so, uh, again, you know, I know that we did a rates, uh, we just passed a, a rate study. This action assumes, um, that this is a standalone item. Okay, when we go and do this, this rate study and financial study, um, that Rep Telus is going to be doing for us, this will actually be incorporated into that. And so, um, maybe the rate study, uh, uh, will, will, will be different long-term. But at a minimum, what our analysis shows is that for the next four years, we need to do a water rate, water sewer rate increase of 15.4% for the next four years, then after that it'd be 3.1%. Any questions? Kenny, have anything to add?
So you said the transfer from the gas fund is 2 million something?
May not be the gas fund.
Or, or transfer in, it would be.
Transfer into the water fund over four years would be, uh, 2,154,374. And that's consistent with the number that we gave you guys at the work session.
Okay, I had 860,000.
That would be a one-time.
Okay.
So is this 15.4% possible for commercial areas?
Yes, we do not have quarter sewer rates for commercial, uh, for commercial. We do not. Uh, and that is one of the things that I'm hoping we'll, um, take a good thorough look at when we do this rate study with Rep Telus. I think we need to overhaul our entire rate structure anyway. I think, I think that the burden needs to be on, on those who, who have higher rates and not those who use less than 1,000 gallons. I think that, uh, you know, there's a lot of ways you, you, you can cut it up. You know, one of the ways you can look at it is, is, is charged by the size of meter. We don't do that.
Do we have an idea of how many people on average use less than 1,000 gallons?
We do not.
So what about, I've just looked at a water bill. Mine is 4,000 gallons and it's 40 something, $41. That's what my bill is.
So your current water bill should be $12.76 times, or actually it should be, uh, $11.04 because that includes a dollar 74, um, meter fee.
The meter fee is going to go back into the water.
Yeah, it goes back into the flat fee, which I think that was probably the intention when this was originally adopted back in, uh, 2020.
It says 2004 times the four.
Times four, plus a dollar 72, plus 1044, times four for sewer.
What's 10 what?
You ain't got sewer.
No, I ain't got sewer.
Okay, so then, yeah.
10, 10 what?
1044 for per 1,000 gallons of sewer.
Oh, yeah, I don't have to do that.
You don't have sewer, so.
Alright, so, I mean, it's not my concern, but I'm just trying to figure out like the elderly people now, that's $45 and a change. So then the elderly people who's about my 4,000 gallons, going to add $6.87 times four?
No.
Right?
Mm-mm.
No?
It, it would be 687 times two, because that's 2,000 gallons.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, if, if you look at the way that you guys ended up setting the rate structure, it's, it's not that far off. Since most people use more than 2,000, more than 1,000 gallons per month. Okay.
Most elderly people are going to use the 6,000 gallons. You're going to hard press find somebody who uses 6,000 gallons. My mom would use 4,000 gallons and things like that.
Well, I mean, you still end up paying for it, but you get used to, to having these dollars 72 bills. And then all of a sudden you get a, a huge bill for, you know, 30, 40, 30, 40 bucks. Because of, of billing by the thousand and, and, uh, doing away with this zero to 2,000 gallon to begin with.
So when, when this is, uh, passed, uh, a second, um, how will we communicate this to people? Just in the newsletter with the water bill?
So we will place a, an item in the water bill that says we are reinstating the rate structure that existed back in 2020.
Okay.
Okay, and we will then add, we will then state what these, what these new rates are. And, uh, that's, that's, that's what we'll do.
So, another question then, with, is the meters written, read at a certain time? So when is, like, we put action in today, are we going to say this is going to be affected immediately? Or is it going to be affected?
So I think, so I think that's, I think that's up to you guys, um, as far as what, how it is you want to do it. Our analysis assumes, uh, the rates going to affect on fiscal year, right? Yeah, so, um, I mean, we, we could leave it as it is and put something in, in the water bill that says, hey, your rates are going up.
The fiscal year is.
July 1.
Change July 1.
July 1. However, you would just have, you would just have to understand that, that, uh.
The next question is, what do you feel better?
What?
Is Jifa okay with that?
Our, 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 our resolution with Jifa doesn't state when it's going to affect. And actually, our, our analysis actually shows on fiscal year, now that I think about it. And, uh, yeah, in order, in order to get this on the May meeting with Jifa, this has to be approved.
So let's, let's, let's look at this one, because I mean, if, if it has to be done, it has to be done. So going to January 1st is not.
Not an option.
Not an option. So I would say let's give it a month so that runs through the newsletter. Everybody knows effectively a month after you get this bill, that your water bill is about to go up. I mean, that's, you know, like, hey.
Do you want to make it on fiscal year?
That would make the most sense.
January?
July 1.
July 1.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
And then that way, we can give some warning.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you think, I don't think we'll get any pushback from Jifa because the resolution doesn't say anything like that.
Their analysis.
Right.
Okay.
Waiting, trying to wait.
As long as the resolution is signed tonight.
Yeah, yeah, they've asked us, uh, in, in order for us to have the, the, um, item that we have on the agenda, which is paying for the water line that we've already ordered the bid for, um, which they told us we could do. Um, and actually, because they told us, that's why they're working with us, I think. They've asked us to send them a, an extended analysis out to 2031, which we, which we did. We sent that to them today. They've asked us to send them a copy of, of the resolution and a copy of the minutes. And we need to have that to them tomorrow.
Now, you have in your, in your packet, an agenda report which has options 1, 2, and 3. Staff recommended option 3, is that?
Yeah, you need to disregard that.
Disregard all that.
Yeah, so I will, I will actually read into the record what the meter fees, what the water rate should be.
Alright, if you'll do that, Eric.
Okay, so starting with, uh, fiscal year, uh, 2025, effective July 1st, 2025. Uh, 2024, I'm sorry. It's been a long day, look at these numbers. Long two weeks, look at these numbers.
You don't want to make that mistake.
No, I don't want to make that mistake, thank you. The meter fee and the first 2,000 gallons, so it'd be a meter fee and, uh, zero to 2,000 gallons would be $27.46 inside the city limits. Each additional 1,000 gallons inside the city limits is $12.74. The meter fee and the first 2,000 gallons for customers outside the city limits, and I think we only have a couple, is $41.16. And then, uh, for each additional 1,000 gallons outside the city limits is $19.9 per 1,000 gallons. For sewer, um, inside the city limits, the first 2,000, uh, zero to 2,000 gallons will be, uh, $24.11. Each additional 1,000 gallons of sewer inside the city limits is $12.05. First 2,000 gallons of sewer outside the city limits is $36.16. And each additional 1,000 gallons, uh, of sewer outside the city limits is $18.08 per 1,000 gallons.
Uh, we entertain a motion to take, uh, Eric's reading of the water rates as a motion.
So, move.
Motion from Nathan, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Steve, any further discussion?
Discussing. Um, after the rate study?
Yep.
It could possibly go up, is what you're saying.
It, it, it could possibly go up, it could possibly go up. One of the luxuries of the, of the bond is that the way that the last bond that city did was structured, the water, sewer, and gas were all presented as a combined utility. And so, right now, we're not looking at, at raising gas rates, although as we've discussed, we are the second lowest in all of them GAC. Um, I think what could end up happening is those gas rates, uh, may rise more than the water rates do. Just so, just to offset some of the, um, shock to the system, if you will. But, uh, again, I'm just sitting here speculating. I, I don't know what the, what the rate study is going to say. But it, 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 it's probably going to go up, um, it's probably going to go up because depending on how much the council decides to bond, and we don't really know what that is right now. We know we need to do a minimum of 38 million just for the water sewer treatment plant. But you guys have also asked us to look at other water sewer projects that are critical, then you'd be done. So what we, what I hope to get from the, uh, rating agency is, um, if you, if you, if you, if you do a bond for this amount, this is what your, what's what your utility rates need to be. If it's this amount, it needs to be this, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So that we can then make some decisions on what we actually want that bond to be.
Anything else?
Um, I do, um, Ms. Forrest, can you clarify like the old water structure and the new water structure?
So the old water structure did not have a base rate. The old water structure currently has a rate of a dollar 72 cents for a meter fee. And then it's $11.04 for each 1,000 gallons.
Okay.
However, if you look at the fact that most people pay, use more than 2,000 gallons, their water rate is a dollar 74 plus, or plus $22.08, 1,000 gallons times two. Okay, and if, if you look at the, at the screen that I have there now, you can see what that difference would be. I mean, did, you know, I guess, I should probably state, um, you know, you'll, you'll also have another option and, you know, to not do any increase at all. But of course, that means that we will no longer be able to do any further, um, improvements to our water sewer infrastructure, including these emergency rates, uh, emergency repairs we've been doing. We just don't have the money. Yes.
And so that's why, like, every couple of months, people water bills would be higher than they were before.
I think so, um, because there are, the, most, most cases, the ones, I know the ones that I've talked to tend to be seniors. I mean, I guess technically by age, I'm probably considered a senior citizen now, but that's the first time that words have come out of my mouth. But, but, huh? I know, um, but it certainly impacts me. Um, I, I've looked at my own water rates, my own water bills, and, and I've seen on there where I, one month I had only a dollar 68 because I didn't use 1,000 gallons. And then the next month, it was, you know, it was $12 plus the sewer rate. So from month to month, my sewer rate, my, my water bill fluctuated a lot.
Right, okay. I, I remember a citizen that had this.
Yeah, it's, it's very common, it's very common.
And some of it was that now, now that we do electronic read, some of it's because you was getting a 34, 35 day bill, 35 days instead of 31 days, 30 days, it was when it read.
I'm not sure that's happening.
That was, that was, because I used to look at my bills, you'll have days, and I remember it was because, well, they didn't get to read it at times, so you get an extra day or so on your bill. Right, am I correct? That was going on. And that was going on, that was going on. You were having 32 days or 33 days, so those are extra days on your bill.
Yeah.
So therefore that month, your bill was high.
Yeah.
And then the next month, your bill was low because it was 27 days.
Yeah.
So now with electronic reading, it shouldn't be, that shouldn't be happening. I hope not. It should, it should be 30, it should be a 30 day or 31, however, however many days it should be. But it's still, I think if I look at a couple of my bills, some of my bills go up because the days are not being read correctly and then you get extra days.
Yep, it's, it's, it's a, it is a huge problem. We, we're still not fully radio read yet.
And so that's what's happening with the bills. So when we're talking about these rates fluctuating and sometimes people having a low bill and sometimes they're having a high bill, because they're paying for, they're going to pay for four days inside their bill.
Yeah, I mean, there, there's a lot of things that people are, are, you know, they're thrown off by on, on their bills. I mean, you know, another example, um, I saw a lot of, a lot of chatter on, on Facebook about, you know, back in January, February, people wondering if, if the water rates got increased then. Well, it was gas, because gas is thrown on the same water bill and it was cold, so people use a lot of gas. And so, and so what people are used to seeing on their water bill from, let's say, you know, May to November, it's going to be lower because it doesn't include a lot of gas usage.
It's historical, like calling the water bill, although it's utility.
Yeah.
So I, I, I think we need to work hard on getting those days because we, even though this is a small increase, when you're looking at adding four days onto a bill, that's going to add more on that month bill. Because we're not, and it's our responsibility, we're not reading the bill correctly. And therefore the, the citizens are taking the burden on paying extra that month. Yeah, they're going to get a breather next month, but you know, you're adding 10, 12 bucks. Some people, that hurts. And it's hard to tell them, you'll get it back next month. They're trying to figure out how they're going to pay this month. So where are we at with electronic readings, getting all, everything on?
So the, Robbie?
We're getting really close now. We got Tyler on board. First it was the gas throwing us off, and then we was going to go ahead and just do the water. And they wouldn't come in right, the readings wouldn't come in right. So, um, now we're. So now we got someone with Tyler that's working exclusively with us. So we got the same person every time we have an issue. And I was told, now we have to go back and take any number that's got, like Jennifer went in and put, when she was entering, she put the transducer with the letter at the end. We got to take the letter off, because it won't pull it in. So she put the A on the end of all of them, and we wasn't supposed to put the A. So now, that's what we're going through now, so she's working through that.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. We've had discussion on the floor, any, any further discussion? All those in favor of this indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes unanimously. All right, next on our agenda is the 2425 budget presentation.
So it's that time of year where we start to shift focus to our financial planning for next year. And we're going to invite Karen Up, our finance director, to give you guys a general overview of, of the budget. And as we have done in the previous two budgets that I've been a part of here, our intention tonight is just to kind of give you guys a general overview, not really expecting any kind of feedback or conversation about it tonight. And then, starting with the work session, we will then, as we've done in previous years, we will invite each department in to present their budget and have more in-depth discussion about every, every departmental budget at that point.
All right, thank you, City Manager, Council, Mayor, Council. Erica said this has been a challenge, budgeting is always a challenge. We always have a lot of needs and not enough money, so you have to make some tough decisions. So just kind of give you some, just some highlights here that I think these were some accomplishments and different things that were in the FY23 budget. I think the one that stands out is to provide current city services effectively, efficiently, and professionally. So we have the general fund budget, had an increase of 6.1%. Water fund went up, we had a decrease of about 19.6%. Gas fund had an increase of 12.5%. And then we had a SLOSS, which went up about 1.3%. Overall, we had a decrease in the budget of 6.4%. In the general fund, we said no mileage rate increase will contribute in our projections. So the current meal rate is 7.9. The digestive growth is expected to be anywhere from 6.5% to 7%, and that's on growth and reassessment. Sales tax receipts, which is the loss, we projected that to decrease by 4%. General fund balance is at a recommended level of 25%. And then we did use fund balance to balance part of the budget, used probably over 300 and some thousand of the fund balance, which the 25% for the city is at about $1.8 million. So we make sure we keep $1.8 million in fund balance. General fund capital projects included vehicle and stormwater drainage. And then we reduced the library budget to a flat $125,000 transfer. So we're eliminating the other budgeted items, which were like utilities and other fees that the city was actually covering in their budget. So this is kind of here, giving you what our general fund revenues were, and then also what the general fund expenditures by department. You can kind of see here where community development is at about 7% of overall expenditures. We have revenue here, which is fines at about 1%, licensing and permits at about 3%. Transfers make up 24% of the overall budget. In our water sewer fund, the revenue forecast actually reflects the rate adjustment that the city manager just talked about. And then revenues reflected the CDBG grant award of $3,455, which we've in the process of revamping the way the water sewer fund is set up, because right now, those CDBG grant money is in the water sewer, as well as you have the GIFA fund. So it kind of caused a big issue when it was time to get those loans approved from GIFA. So we're going to restructure the way that the water sewer is set up. Rate increase of recommended to continue investment in infrastructure improvement. This kind of just shows you a breakdown percentage of the water sewer fund. We have 78% is the wastewater treatment plant with the revenues. On the expenditure side, the biggest user is going to be on your, the personnel services, which is about 8%, oh, excuse me, no, that's going to be on your, your capital outlay, which is about 75% of the overall water sewer budget. Recommended water and sewer rate changes, we're recommending 15.4%. Water and sewer rate increase for the next four years. And so we've already gone over that, so I'm not going to spend a whole bunch of time on this particular slide. In the gas fund, rate study is proposed during the FY25 budget, which was just. One is for the IT director, and then another for code enforcement officer. The budget does include a merit increase of 2.5% for employees that are meeting or exceeding expectations. And there will be no changes in the health insurance or benefits. So our next step this week, which we've already did, is we've already published the budget in, about the hearings anyway, in the newspaper, but we'll make sure that the budget is published on the website and that a hard topic is available in City Hall. May 21st, that'll be our first hearing on the operating budget. Then on June 6th, that's going to be another public hearing on the budget and the mileage rate. That'll be at a work session. And then on June 18th, be another public hearing on the mileage rate and the budget. And then on June 18th, that's when council will approve the operating budget and the mileage rate.
So I'll add to that, that calendar did not reflect that the May 2nd work session. And we intend to use a very large portion of that meeting to discuss all the individual department budgets.
Thank you, Karen. Okay, that, that completes our regular agenda. We do have a need for an executive session. I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session for personnel litigation and real estate.
Amen.
Second. A motion from Nathan and a second from Tyson, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you all for attending. I don't know that we'll take any action when we come back out of executive session. Probably, okay. Okay. We are now back in regular session. Nathan, I believe you have a motion for us?
I do.
Okay. Motion to amend the agenda to include discussion out of executive session. Subdue. Motion from Tyson and a second from Steve, all in favor, say aye.
All right. All right, I'll make a motion to amend the 2324 fiscal year budget for the police department in the amount of $182,750 for personnel, for a one-time salary adjustment for sworn officers, except for the police chief.
Second. We have a motion from Nathan and a second from Tyson, further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like, sign. Okay, that concludes our meeting. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Subdue. Second. Motion from Steve, second from Tyson, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.